Welcome. Welcome to this policy forum in preparation for the UN General Assembly Special Session on the World Drug Problem. I am Adam Lupel, Director of Research and Publications here at IPI. First off, I'd like to thank our partners in this endeavor, the Conflict Prevention and Peace Forum lined up here in the front row. They've really been instrumental in getting this project off the ground, so I'd like to extend my gratitude to them, particularly to Dr. Renata Segura and Ms. Sabrina Stein. I'd also like to thank my colleague Jimena Leiva and the entire IPI event staff, who maybe we don't thank enough from this podium, they do such a professional job always, so thank you. This event comes at a time when the entire multilateral system would appear to be in a once-in-a-generation moment of review and reflection. Whether by design or by the serendipity of a convergence of anniversaries, we are seeing reviews of UN peacekeeping or peace operations more broadly, the UN peacebuilding architecture, the Women Peace and Security Agenda. In addition, the Secretary General has also appointed a high-level panel to review the global response to health crises. And of course, we have coming up the UN Summit to adopt the Post-2015 Development Agenda, the SDGs, the World Climate Summit, and the 2016 World Humanitarian Summit, not to mention something close to home, IPI's own Independent Commission on Multilateralism, which is engaged in its own systemic review, and there are probably others that I am missing. It's a very busy agenda. Perhaps a bit at risk of being lost in all this incredible activity is the run-up to the General Assembly Special Session, UNGAS, on the world drug problem in 2016. This is planned for the first half of the year, next year, to review and evaluate existing drug control policies and strategies to address the current global drug problem. This UNGAS is being convened actually three years ahead of schedule at the request of Mexico, Colombia, and Guatemala, so we are grateful to have Ambassador Carrera here with us today. This will be the third UNGAS on this topic, but the first one since 1998, so it is a momentous occasion to say the least, and a historic opportunity to assess what's working and what's not. In 2014, a joint ministerial statement issued at the Commission on Narcotics Drugs, quote, "emphasized the importance of a broad, transparent, inclusive, and scientific evidence-based discussion among member states with inputs from other relevant stakeholders." And Ban Ki-moon has called for a wide-ranging and open debate that considers all options. Observers point to at least two goals for UNGAS 2016. First, to foster an evidence-based evaluation of the current drug control regime, and second, to make decisions on how to move forward and address the ever-changing challenges of which there are many. Now, to have a session that is truly broad, transparent, and inclusive requires involvement from all UN bodies and country missions in New York and around the world. Thus, it is important that the UN community engages actively on questions of process and substance relevant for UNGAS early on. This is particularly critical considering the very busy agenda, as I mentioned earlier, for this year and beyond. So that's where we come in. There has been, it must be said, some high-quality convening on this topic within the UN, particularly by our friends at UNU, but we thought now is a good time to have an independent conversation here across the street, as IPI is wont to do, to keep the momentum going for the New York-based UN community, which may see this as a conversation more for Vienna, but it's coming to New York, and we need to be informed to be clear about what's on the agenda for UNGAS, what's at stake, and what are some of the possible outcomes, and how can we all better prepare for this critically important debate? We have, I think, an excellent panel here to help us address these questions. You have their bios in your handout, and the game plan is that each panelist will talk just for about seven to 10 minutes, so we hope to have plenty of time for an interactive Q and A, and we will begin with Senator Golding of Jamaica. Senator, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lupel. I just want to begin by thanking the International Peace Institute and the Conflict Prevention and Peace Forum for inviting me to be part of this policy forum today, and I just want to acknowledge my fellow panelists, diplomats, and other distinguished ladies and gentlemen who are in the room. We are hoping in Jamaica that the UNGAS 2016 will be a productive exercise that will allow for a recalibration, a review, and some fair and balanced analysis as to whether the existing system operated under the three conventions is still fit for purpose, still relevant, and whether there ought to be some consideration as to a new approach to the issue of international drug policy. In Jamaica, our primary concern in this regard is cannabis, which is—Jamaica is a producer of cannabis. It is used in our society medicinally from a folk point of view. It is regarded as a sacrament, a holy sacrament, by the Rastafarian community, which is an indigenous religious or spiritual group, and we have, for a long time, seen the need to treat with cannabis in Jamaica in a way that's proportionate, rational, and in keeping with the aspirations of our people. The existing treaty framework does provide some flexibility in how countries shape their domestic policy, but it is still somewhat rigid, and we have, in trying to reform our law, which was essentially a complete prohibition on cannabis before, we have sought to work within the flexibilities that exist, but it does lead to some anomalous results in terms of the policy initiatives that one is able to embark on. So in an era where we're seeing increasing moves towards countries or states within countries going down new paths in their treatment, their legal treatment of cannabis, we think that this cannot really be ignored. The genie is out of the bottle, so to speak, on this, so I think the time has come for the international treaty system to be looked at with a sort of fresh set of eyes from this perspective, because I think it sort of brings international law into disrepute, in a sense. If you have a framework which is being ignored by some within their domestic space, or which is leading to policy initiatives which are constrained by what the treaties have to say but aren't regarded by their populations as really coherent and viable. So what certainly Jamaica would like to see is, as happened, I believe, in the last two Ungases, that an expert advisory group be appointed to look at the question of international drug policy afresh, and the history and present. We would like to see civil society and academia represented on that advisory council, so that by the time the 2019 UNGAS comes around, there will be something tangible that has emerged in terms of some recommendations that can take into account the views of all countries and what room there may be for some adjustment policy-wise. The scheduling of cannabis is an issue for us. We think that the current scheduled treatment of cannabis is inappropriate, and clearly so, and should be rethought. Whether that—to what extent other countries are ready to come on board with that remains to be seen, but that is something we would like to see put on the table for discussion. Overall, we're hoping that what the UNGAS can produce is a period going forward in time for 2019 during which some positive momentum towards needed reforms can be achieved. And as has been said, this issue is somewhat squeezed among other very major international issues that are coming to the front burner in the next 12 months or so, but nevertheless, this is an issue which is of great interest to many people around the world, and so we're hoping that it will not be lost, so to speak, but that the opportunity, such as it is presented by UNGAS, will be seized and something meaningful can come out of it. And I would just thank Guatemala and Colombia, and I think Mexico, their presidents who initiated the process towards having this sort of interim UNGAS, so to speak, in 2016, which I think is important because it provides an opportunity for some decisions to be taken, which may not be themselves policy changes, but may provide for the necessary review and analysis to take place under the auspices of the UN system to enable recommendations to be formulated that then can get somewhere in the near future after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving Jamaica's perspective on this issue in an era, as you say, when countries are moving in the direction of, let's say, creative responses to the global drug problem, as you say, the genie is out of the bottle, and there's a danger of there being a challenge to the coherence of international law. Also, appreciate, thank you for the concrete suggestion, or that Jamaica's looking for the appointment of an expert advisory council out of UNGAS, one sort of concrete expectation or hope for an outcome. We'll now move on to Ambassador Carrera. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and I want to start as well, as my friend here from Jamaica, to thank the IPI for organizing this dialogue at the end of the more or less working sessions of the UN, because August is almost impossible to work here, but July closing things. And you missed just one conference, the whole list of conferences. This is the third international conference on financing for development that took place in Addis last week, and it's a critical factor for many of us, not just because we were there suffering with the jet lag, but also because we were in the final stages of that negotiation. And also, of course, being very much honored to be together with the Minister of Justice of Jamaica, who's a friend of someone who we have learned a lot from him from his expositions. Martin is, you know, a tremendous NGO that has led us, to many of us, to understand better the global drug problem in a different perspective. And Simon, that comes from UNODC, and I would say also that I have learned a lot from UNODC papers and documents over the last four years that I have been involved in this discussion. Let me start with an anecdote. It was April 2012, and we were all together in Cartagena in Colombia for the America Summit, and all of a sudden, that debate of that America Summit was not very clear what was it going to be about. But President Santos from Colombia opened the floor from the very beginning with two basic issues. One, that that meeting of Cartagena of the America Summit was going to be the last meeting without Cuba being present there, and that was actually a prophecy, because the America Summit of last year in Panama, where Cuba was present. The second element is that we have to start a conversation about drug policy, because drug policy is not going the right way. The answer from President Obama, that was challenging one of the two major tenets of American foreign policy towards Latin America in this regard, his answer was basically, on Cuba, we will think about it, and we would have seen that he had thought about it definitely. Changes just happened this week, two days ago in Washington with the opening of the Cuban Embassy, and then he said on drug policy, something very interesting. He said, you know, I know you want to experiment with new solutions, we're open to allow any experimentation, but let me tell you something, he said, President Obama, you will experiment, and you will end up doing exactly what we're doing today, okay, in America. It's interesting. It wasn't the most humble moment of President Obama in history, by all means, again. I have met him, he's a very brilliant man, and a humble man in many other dimensions, but that was a very humble moment. Just a few months after that, a few months after April 2012, two states in the United States approved the consumption of cannabis for recreational purposes for the first time, with all due respect, with clear violation of all international treaties. Okay? And just 18 months afterwards, the US Attorney General, the head of the Department of Justice, allowed for new regulations on how to treat those who have been committing crimes related to drugs, and particularly reducing the weight of penalties that we're going to address, and eliminating the priority that was given to incarcerate people based on drug offenses, particularly minor drug offenses, by all means. And just 24 months afterwards, the same Department of Justice allowed in Colorado and Washington that any money proceedings coming from cannabis sales for recreational purposes was going to be legal and accepted in US banks. So in 24 months after Cartagena, it wasn't us who had to review anything, you know, it was the US who did it, okay? And it's very important to understand this, because that change in domestic policy within the US really is what has marked the change of many of the discussions about drug policy in the last two years. Where were we there, April 2012? I think President Obama was pretty clear. It was kind of a dogma about drug policy, a mantra, something that couldn't be challenged. It was just one single truth that we all have to follow, because apparently it was based on experimentation and it was proved to be right, you know? I think two years after that, last year, we were all discussing that, yes, drug policy is like any public policy. It has failures and things that are correct, you know, but we need to learn from experience, not from dogmas. Okay? And as I always said, my friend here, the Minister of Hermes, once saying this, the ambassador of Jamaica as well, in a dinner, I am an economist by training, and I always use data and statistics to prove whether a monetary policy or a fiscal policy is working. It was amazing not to have the same instruments to assess drug policy, you know? The current things that we do to assess policy, we assess health policy based on the outcomes. We assess educational policy based on outcomes. Why shouldn't we assess drug policy based on outcomes? Why is it such a weird thing, a weird situation, where there was an area of public policy that couldn't be debated like the rest of public policies? Okay? So that was the first step, moving from the dogma into public policy as it is in any normal, open, democratic society, where we debate the effectiveness or not of specific measures. It's not about the fact that, you know, the whole approach about drug policy has been wrong, it's just to assess it, you know? Where are the merits and where are the limitations of the policy? So just put it at the level of any human being kind of public policy, you know, addressing the global drug problem from an open perspective. Second move that was important is about the traditional approach that was putting a lot of emphasis on repression, okay? There's a lot of discussion about supply and demand. I always said, for a point of view of public policy, I would say repression or prevention is always what you have in mind, you know? Attacking the problem once, it has come out, or preventing it from happening. And as it happens in any public policy, preventing is always cheaper than trying to treat the problem, okay? So the emphasis on repression and control, once the problem arises, is really a very damaging approach. It redirects resources to military control, penal control, the judicial system, you know? Instead of investing in health, in education, in community development, in economical alternatives to communities that are poor and depend on the drug trafficking in order to make an income, you know? And we have always said that for a certain percentage of the price of repression, we can get a lot from prevention. And that calls for domestic policies within those countries that have large domestic consuming drug markets, and also for policies in countries in trafficking or supplying drugs in order to promote development and also health and education. So that changed, that rebalancing of the strategy from the repression into the prevention is something that has to take place. And the third element that is important, that I think has to be considered, is how to make also repression more effective. At the end of the day, what is more damaging of the drug policy situation is not the fact that there are human beings that depend on drug consumption because they have become addicted to it. That's a health problem, and that has to be addressed from a social and health perspective. What is really damaging is the creation of organized crime around this issue, and how do we treat that organized crime, transnational organized crime? And I think the effectiveness of our strategy is questionable. I mean, the fact that interdiction is more important than control of money laundering is still today, I think is an issue. What keeps transnational organizations, organized crime alive is the incredible profitability of the business itself, okay? And why we cannot control that profitability? Because we don't have enough interdiction? I don't think so. It's because any proceeding is going to the financial system, global financial system, and they just go to places where it can be hidden, you know? And the problem with this is that our emphasis in interdiction of drug itself, not in the profitability of the business, okay, is really, again, directing resources where they are not having the right impact. We need to take the money out of the organized crime, transnational organized crime. We need to be able to seize that money, okay, and break the profitability of the business, as simple as that. And that is the effectiveness of a repression strategy against organized crime. Those ideas that we should be starting to discuss in the UNGAS next year, we should have an open debate about these ideas, and we should start to, again, assess global drug policy from an effectiveness point of view, not from a kind of mantra, dogma point of view. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You seem to have a few fans.
Yeah, I see.
Thank you very much for telling—we're starting with the stories, in some respects, the narrative of how this current phase of the debate has developed since the America Summit, and the shift in the United States, both the change at the state level and in criminal justice approaches, and the hopefully moving drug policy away from just a dogma approach towards a more evidence-based approach, which is the hope of UNGAS, I think, for everyone, and then the need to examine a rebalancing between prevention or repression, but also recognition that that doesn't mean completely moving away, that you can never get rid of a law enforcement approach, but the key point is that we need to be more effective and base our approaches on experience and effectiveness. Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to Martin Yezmo. Martin, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thanks to the organizers for the opportunity to share some thoughts in this distinguished panel. What I'd like to do is to take a look at the bigger picture of the situation of the series of Ungases, special sessions that have taken place. I think on your chairs, you found a scheme with the timelines that I won't take you through, that there's no time to do that, but I want particularly to look at the part of the UNGAS decades. Roughly speaking, you can say that the whole period of the UN drug control system can be divided into two blocks of three decades each. The first three decades were sort of driven by developing the whole international legal framework, the three drug control conventions, and the three decades thereafter, 1990s, 2000, and the one we are in right now, you can call the UNGAS decades. And I want to draw your attention basically to the turning point between those two phases, so to look at what was the thing that triggered the first UNGAS, and what was the political setting and the stage at the start of this UNGAS, the series of UNGAS, and the lead-up that we are now facing to the third one. So the turning point was clearly in 1989 for a number of reasons. Of course, it was politically a big moment. There was the Soviet withdrawal from Afghanistan. It was at the end of that year, the fall of the Berlin Wall. It was basically the beginning of the end of the Cold War. But also in terms of international drug policy, it was a relevant moment, because it was right after the third convention had been concluded, so the whole legal system was firmly in place by then, and 1989 was also the moment of the deadline that was set by the '61 Convention to phase out all traditional uses of coca and cannabis. That deadline was 25 years, and that ended in 1989, because the '61 Treaty came into effect in '64. It was also a politically key moment, and that was basically the trigger for the first UNGAS, in August 1989, the assassination in Colombia of Luis Carlos Gallan. He was the presidential candidate at that moment, who almost certainly would have won the elections the year thereafter. So a month after the assassination, Virgilio Barco, the president, came to the General Assembly here across the road, and he made a dramatic call to arms. It was really a dramatic speech in almost similar in tone, you could say, to a Bush, like the Bush speech after 9/11. In the words of Virgilio Barco, he said, for example, "In this war, the time has come for the community of nations to choose sides." It was also similar to the impetus coming from Mexico now to ask for an advancement of the UNGAS, because the levels of violence simply had become unmanageable. So it was the feeling of urgency that it just could not go on like this, you know? Because before the assassination of Gallan, already in Colombia, 12 Supreme Court justices had been assassinated, an attorney general, Minister of Justice, so it had really—it was undermining the whole functioning of Colombia as a state. After the assassination, the candidacy was taken over by Cesar Gaviria, who then indeed won the elections the year thereafter, and who, as many of you know, is now a member of the Global Commission on Drug Policy, also very active in calling for an open debate at the UNGAS. Gallan's son is currently a senator in Colombia, and he was the one who last year authored the bill for medical marijuana use in Colombia that was approved by the Senate. But it was not only—the speech of Barco was not only a dramatic call to arms, but also, yeah, he expressed anger and frustration about a number of fundamental issues that he felt were not being addressed sufficiently. And he was very—in his speech, also very action-oriented. That's now the call for the UNGAS outcome document, that it needs to be concise and action-oriented, concrete recommendations, and, well, in his speech, he made a number of very concrete points. And let me just give you a few quotes, because it did set the stage and the tone for the first and the second UNGAS. So he wanted more attention to the side of demand reduction. He said, yeah, almost all efforts thus far had been focused on supply reduction, and I quote, "Every tactic and every weapon in the war on drugs pales into insignificance when compared to the need to reduce demand." when compared to the need to reduce demand because the only law that the drug traffickers do not break is the law of supply and demand." He also expressed his frustration about, because a year before that, Colombia had taken the initiative for a resolution in the General Assembly, calling for restrictions, international restrictions on arms control. And that project had gone nowhere. And he said, "That is another part of this same picture that needs to be addressed." He called attention, just like the ambassador Carrera just did, to the issue of money laundering. And a quote from his speech, "Somehow, our sense of justice is warped when a poor farmer who feeds his family by growing coca is seen as a greater villain than the wealthy international banker who illegally transfers millions of dollars of drug money." He called attention to developmental assistance, but not in the sense of alternative development projects, but he said, "More important is the adoption of trade measures and fair prices of our exports." Because that same year, and that was also significant for Colombia, was the collapse of the International Coffee Agreement, which set fixed prices for coffee at the international market, and it meant a loss that year for Colombia of more than $400 million of income. He said, "61 developing countries tend to lose a total of $5 billion next year. We cannot afford to talk idealistically of crop substitution in the case of the coca leaf while sabotaging Colombia's farmers' main cash crop and the country's largest So, and finally, he made his call to have a special session of the General Assembly to address these issues. And he asked, "Let us declare today that together we shall use the last decade of this century to bury the international scourge of drugs." So in terms of the language and wording, there are several things in his speech that we don't like to hear anymore today. But in terms of the agenda setting, those, the points that he mentioned were, yeah, became a very important agenda for the first and the second UNGAS. And the UN response was incredibly swift, unusual, I would say, for the UN. Because his speech was in September. Five months later, there was a special session of the General Assembly on this issue that ended with a 100-point, very concrete set of recommendations, and with the establishment of an expert advisory group to review the whole UN drug control system. The first half of the 1990s then, yeah, the discussions about the recommendations of that group were very open. There were discussions about harm reduction, about decriminalization. There were, WHO started a series of studies to look at the whole cocaine issue, at the cannabis issue, whether that should not be reviewed. So all issues that are today still difficult to get approved in any UN language or resolution. So then halfway, Mexico calls for the second UNGAS. Already after eight years, the second UNGAS took place. And in the Mexican call, they, similar issues were supported that Colombia had raised. And after that call and the actual preparations for the second UNGAS, which were delegated to the Commission on Economic Drugs in Vienna, that's where slowly all the issues became politically into difficulties and, in fact, yeah, the whole call for a more system-wide, coherent approach, which was one of the big points of the expert group in 1990, was declared complete failure, and not in our assessment, but in the assessment of the Secretary General. The whole SWAP initiative, Systemwide Action Plan on Drugs, was a disaster, a failure, just didn't go anywhere. And from then on, yeah, things became more monopolized in Vienna and the agencies based there. So now, looking at the next one. You can say that the 1988 UNGAS still, it managed to get a number of important compromises on the issues raised by both Colombia and Mexico. And that was translated into language of more shared responsibility, a more balanced approach, more demand reduction, attention. There was a section in the Action Plan on Money Laundering on precursor, so all the, let's say, northern responsibilities for the international response to drugs. But at the other side, it also called for this drug-free world in 10 years, a quite unrealistic assumption, and it also reaffirmed the whole basic set of principles of the international drug control framework. So in terms of the structural responses, apart from mentioning those issues in the Political Declaration and Action Plan, still a lot of the original concerns that were raised have not been addressed. And in terms of arms control, if we talk about money laundering today, the HSBC scandal with the billions of dollars laundered for Mexico without one person criminally prosecuted, the difficulties of finding agreement on regulating financial markets, the impossibility to address the issue of beneficial ownership because of the deregulated financial markets, et cetera. In the meantime, in, at the national level, policies did develop and started to divert. At the national level, many countries by now have decriminalized use of drugs, possession of personal use, harm reduction policies have been distributed, have been expanded hugely around the world. So there is a changing policy landscape, and that is the good story and the positive side, also now thinking what can come out of the next UNGAS. There are few countries who are still talking in terms of a war on drugs. There is a clear attempt by a growing number of countries to try, at least, to find a more humane approach, to have a more health focus, more development focus, more respect for human rights. The issue of proportionality of sentences have come to the agenda, and also the important issue of access to essential medicines that are controlled under the same treaties as all drugs. So those are positive trends, and some of those definitely will be reflected in better language in the outcome document of the UNGAS. On the other side, the difficulty still is on the table of having an open debate about the more systemic flaws and the inconsistencies in the control system itself, both the institutional architecture in the United Nations, but also in the treaties themselves. There, yeah, there is still, most countries have still a denial of the flaws and the inconsistencies. And the difficulty is that the treaties do not have any inbuilt review mechanism. There are no regular conferences of the parties to look at everything is going well or not. There is no inbuilt mechanism for an evolution of the system. That's why in a recent seminar that we had with a group of international treaty lawyers, someone called this, "In comparison with other international legal frameworks, this drug control treaty system," she called, "was a jurassic system in terms of international law." So that is why we also hope that the initiative, like the one already mentioned by Minister of Justice of Jamaica, to have an expert advisory group that could look at those more systemic problems in international drug control and how to facilitate the positive trend towards more humane drug policies around the world. Thanks.
Thank you, Martin, for giving us, putting this all into historical context of the previous UNGAS systems and how we've come to this particular moment in time. It's interesting to me to hear that it was really levels of violence that have created the urgency to, for the original call for the special session and as well today, first by Colombia, now by Mexico. And it's interesting to me that you point out that some of the original concerns that were voiced back in 1989 and 90 still have not been addressed, but that there are, of course, we're seeing this changing policy landscape at the national levels, and so there is hope that some of this will now be discussed at the UNGAS and be incorporated into the new UNGAS outcome document. But that there are, of course, challenges in terms of to address some of the inconsistencies in the regime. And I think as a sort of an old political scientist who studies constitutional mechanisms for amendments and things, it's interesting to me, this point that you make, that there's no inbuilt mechanism for the evolution of the legal system from a legal standpoint. I think that's an interesting point to reflect upon. And thank you also for this very useful chart. I think we'll all consult this in the days and months ahead. Now we'll turn to Simone Monasebian for a very important perspective from the UN and UNODC. Thank you very much. Simone, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The last time we had a huge event focusing on drugs that we partnered with on IPI was, I think, in 2009 or 2010, Warren, where we actually launched the World Drug Report here, once or twice even. And so it's very good to be back home again now. And I also thank CPPF for their focus on this issue. I was asked to provide a little bit of background and discuss possible outcomes and how delegates can better prepare. Some very tough acts to follow, but I shall do my best. You know, this is a very timely event. Yesterday, we had in ECOSAC the CND here and INCB here, and I presented the Secretary General's report on the death penalty, which goes into application of the death penalty in drug cases, something that is still going on. And as we know, the Secretary General and all UN agencies and our executive director of UNODC are against the death penalty in all instances, although one of the issues that we have, and it's not an issue that is, you know, solely in Vienna, in the CND, it's one in New York and the General Assembly as well, is that when it comes to the death penalty, there is not a consensus. It's not just a few countries. There are many countries that still want to have the death penalty. So this is a very interesting time where we're discussing an exchange of ideas, but some things have become clearer in the last few months, and maybe we can talk about that and do a little stocktaking and then figure out where that might lead us. And what I'd like to start out with was that yesterday, the ECOSAC approved of the March 2015 CND modality resolution for the UNGAS, which calls in paragraph five for the CND to produce a short, substantive, concise, and action-oriented document comprising a set of operational recommendations based upon a review of the implementation of the Political Declaration and Plan of Action, including an assessment of the achievements as well as ways to address longstanding and emerging challenges within the framework of the three international conventions and other UN-relevant instruments. Okay, so that is the outcome document that we're going to have. Is that the outcome of the UNGAS? Well, one can say that is part of the outcome of the UNGAS, but I think in practical terms, if we take stock of what has occurred since the Political Declaration and Plan of Action called for having a CND high-level review in 2014 and an UNGAS. It didn't say when the UNGAS would be, but it said, "And recommended that the General Assembly call an UNGAS." And thereafter, under the excellent leadership of Mexico, Bruno, it's good to see you here from the mission, and especially good to see so many third committee members here, who are really the unsung heroes in making sure that we move forward on these issues in a productive and constructive way. But that very important resolution, 67193 chaired by Mexico, then decided to convene the UNGAS in 2016. And much has occurred since those two things happened, since we looked at the Political Declaration recommendation to have it, and then this resolution that was passed in the General Assembly in December of 2012, calling for this UNGAS to review opportunities and challenges of the Political Declaration and Plan of Action within the framework of the conventions. So it wasn't Vienna that decided what the parameters of the UNGAS would be. It was the General Assembly here in New York that did. And it's important to remember that because sometimes, and I think this discussion has subsided in recent months, which is useful. There has been talk in the past that, well, you know, Vienna is cooking up these political ways of handling these issues, and New York is not involved. But it's very important to remember that it was New York that decided what the UNGAS would cover, and that the General Assembly was at the lead of that. Of course, the General Assembly then decided to let the CND prepare, lead the preparations as the chief policy expert body, but in consultation with the President of the General Assembly. So the President of the General Assembly has an active role. We know that this President of the General Assembly had an important high-level thematic debate in May. And where are we headed? Having looked at that debate, having looked at what Senator Golding said at last May's GA thematic debate on drugs, that there needs to be a more holistic approach to this problem, an approach that, in addition to effective law enforcement, places priority on other important elements of the problem, such as health and wellness, human rights, human development and safety, with the aim of reducing the negative effects on people's lives and the impact on vulnerable populations. I think that, right there in a nutshell, is what we need the outcome of this UNGAS to be. I mean, it couldn't have been better said, except perhaps by the Vice Minister of External Relations of Guatemala, who added to that and complimented it by saying that, "No single way to approach the problem in all states can be found. Focus needs to be on reduction of social costs to the phenomenon without dropping our guard on transnational organized crime, without dropping our guard on that, while addressing alternatives to incarceration and proportionality of sentencing and concentrating on the most vulnerable segments of society, including women and children." If you look at the Secretary General's task force on transnational organized crime and drug trafficking, you will see that that is very much in keeping with the key messages of the Secretary General on these issues. So I think that we're speaking in a much more united way. Speaking is one thing, action is another thing, and dollars is really where it's at, isn't it? Because if the regular budget is funding very little of this work, and extra budgetary contributions are funding 90% or more of this, then we have problems there as well, too. You know, having spent the formative years of my career, you won't find this in the bio, but it's no secret, representing drug dealers, drug users, people who were involved in cartels for seven years, probably all the time I spent in prisons would amount to like a level-one offender if you added all the days and hours I spent in federal, state, and international prisons, and very meaningful time of my career. I was very happy to see that, that was in the 90s, that now we are talking about things that so many of the defense attorneys, who were my brothers and sisters then, had been, you know, crying about for years and years. So a lot of progress has been made. If you look at Resolution 69200 of the General Assembly, what did it say about what the UNGAS should be, right? 69200, which was adopted last fall in the General Assembly, was originally from a resolution in Vienna that went to ECOSAC and then was adopted by the GA, and it said that the UNGAS constitutes an opportunity, this is paragraph 10 of 69200, in case any of you want to follow up, "The UNGAS constitutes an opportunity for a high-level and wide-ranging discussion among member states leading up to the target date of 2019 within the framework of the three international drug control conventions and other relevant instruments in order to further implement the commitments and targets set out in the Political Declaration and Plan of Action." And then we saw in Resolution 69- And then we saw in Resolution 69201, also passed last December in the General Assembly, that they reaffirmed the support for the preparations of the special session, which will review progress in the political declaration within the framework of the three conventions. And they added a little bit more by saying, "including inter alia addressing measures to reach an effective balance between supply and demand reduction measures and addressing all the consequences, all the consequences, of the world drug problem, including in the health, social, human rights, economic justice, and security fields." It also invited member states to share their drug policy experiences as a contribution to the special session. And then finally, the next thing that we saw was the modality resolution this time around, not the one that ultimately became 69200, but the one that was approved by ECOSOC yesterday, that came from the CND last March. And that one resolved that the CND, as a leading entity, and we expect this resolution to also go to the GA and most likely be adopted, we'll see, resolved that the CND, as the entity leading the preparations for the special sessions, shall address it in an open-ended manner, supported and guided by the PGA. And that the organizational arrangements in that of the UNGAS shall consist of a general debate and interactive multi-stakeholder roundtables conducted in parallel to the plenary. And those five roundtables will cover, one, drugs and crime, two, drugs and health, three, drugs and development, four, drugs and human rights, including vulnerable populations, and five, emerging issues. And there will be extensive civil society participation in there. How that will come about, the PGA and the CND will have discussions to clarify that when it comes to ECOSOC and when it comes to non-ECOSOC accredited NGOs. I see Heather Haas from the Civil Society Task Force here today, and we're very grateful that Social Society has been such a, the Task Force has been such a constructive force in that it's brought together all the various views, of those who are retentionist countries' oriented views NGOs, or those who are more, let's say, reformist-oriented NGOs, together to try to find where there's common ground, because it's more likely to make progress on those issues than to say that this UNGAS will stop application of the death penalty, or this UNGAS will allow the General Assembly to adopt the resolution that will use the word harm reduction, which has never happened in this General Assembly, right? It's not even on the table. But nevertheless, the work goes on. Looking at the political declaration and plan of action, there's a lot of good language in there about treatment, about alternatives to incarceration. So the bones are there. And if you look also at the joint ministerial statement, you see the importance of this integrated approach and what our learned colleagues here today spoke about in terms of public health and justice and law enforcement sectors working together. And then if you look at the conventions, what is the problem there? You mentioned that it might be lack of review of the conventions, that might be one of the issues, and inconsistencies being another. As to inconsistencies, you know, as a lawyer, I spend my time looking at every document that's legal for inconsistencies. That makes the money for lawyers and for third committee and every committee member there is. I don't think it's any different in any conventions. But as far as review mechanisms, you know, I'm a big supporter of review mechanisms. I have one for the UN Convention Against Corruption. We would love to have one if member states so decide. For the UN Convention Against Transnational Organized Crime, we still don't, even though that convention went into force beforehand and had more signatories. But we do have entities that do review what go on with regard to these conventions. And we have a CND, we have an INCB. There are places to review this. There are, there is WHO's looking at scheduling of drugs as well. There are vehicles that may or may not be well-funded, may or may not be implementing their mandates as one may wish, but there are ways to review things that exist, and I think we should look at those and see how they can be strengthened, where they're going right, and where they can learn from other better practices if they're not headed in the right direction. You know, in my view, of course, we should never be satisfied with something that's just okay, and we should strive for the greatest kind of impact that we can have, as the DSG and SGR was telling us to do, not be complacent. But I think the UNGAS has already been a success for many reasons, and I hope that it will continue to be so. And I'll just give you a couple of reasons and then maybe end at that. I think the talking points of the UN system on drugs and crime, which you can find on the UNGAS website, which talk about all our efforts needing, the UN needing to rebalance its approach to drugs, or all of us not having to have rebalanced our approach to drugs. I think if you look at greater involvement from UN agencies, you can see the papers that a number of the UN agencies have submitted on the UNGAS website as well. I think if you looked at, if any of you, how many of you were at the CND? I know Karen from the Canadian Mission, you were there in March, but you're all welcome from New York to come to CND sessions. I went in March, and I was really impressed by the level of debate and the integration of NGOs, of all different views in that debate. They weren't sitting in a balcony, they weren't behind some other floor door, they were on the floor with the CND and engaged in very important discussions. And so I think that that's a success also, and something that maybe New York could take a best practice from Vienna on, right? Possible, if member states wish. The next thing I think that has been a success of these discussions on the UNGAS is I think other parts of the UN are learning from all of us. Look at the Open Working Group's document on the proposed goals for the SDGs. We always talk about, when we talk about drugs and crime 16, but what about three? Proposed goal three, which deals with public health, talks about prevention and treatment of narcotic drugs and substance abuse needing to be prioritized as a development issue. Where is the money for that? We need some Q and A. So I will just end with two quick points. Thank you. In addition to that, we have very strong resolutions from member states that are talking about bringing together the justice and the health sectors. The US put together a fantastic resolution that was consent, this adopted by all delegations in the CND on bringing public health and justice sector together and on alternatives to incarceration. And finally, if you look at what happened last month at the CCPCJ, the Commission on Crime Prevention and Criminal Justice, the revision of the standard minimum rules for prisoners, the new Mandela rules, which yesterday also were approved by ECOSOC and will go to the General Assembly, and what, how they talk about how we need to treat people who are, who are serving sentences or charged with drug crimes. So I think all of these are, and the prioritization, INCB speech yesterday, if you heard that, which was very important and very clear on what these issues are, and also even the three member states who spoke in favor of the death penalty yesterday, even in their statements, they talked about how they saw that there is a trend against the death penalty and how they are doing studies on the issue of that. And so I think that we have seen some changes. We need to support member states with funding and continue the momentum to do this. And I thank you all for the opportunity to be here today and look forward to discussing further with you as we move forward.
Great, thank you, Simone. Thank you so much for giving us a detailed account of what's happening really across the street. The role of New York is important, is not just its, as I said at the outset, this is not just a Vienna conversation, that's really important, and it's heartening to hear you speak about the way in which we are, in many respects, speaking in a more united way, that there's a burgeoning consensus, that something that we need to have come out, is a more holistic approach in the outcome to reduce social costs while not taking the eye off the challenge of organized crime. Of course, as you point out, action is perhaps another issue, and there's a big issue of funding, of how we fund these actions is important. But it's also interesting, heartening to see your perspective that in some ways, UNGAS is already building up a record of success, and so that's always pleasant to hear, an optimistic, an optimistic account. We've got about a half an hour for Q and A, and the floor is open. Yes.
I'm Roma Stibbrevi.
And if you could wait for the microphone, give your name. We are webcasting, and I would like to know your name and where you're from. Thank you.
I'm Roma Stibbrevi, and I'm President of NGO Sustainability. I worked in the Division of Narcotic Drugs in Vienna many years ago. I feel like Rip Van Winkle coming back to it. But there's one aspect that I worked on that you didn't mention, and that is the annual reporting of countries. And that was a big problem because, as the same issue we're discussing on the SDGs, is how countries are able to do reporting. And it is not easy to do statistics, and that's the thing that was failing us the most at that time. The other question is that I'd love to know, we had many prevention policies in place, like having the Afghan farmers grow coffee instead of the poppy, poppies. So I would like to know what prevention activities have been effective?
One here, and then in the back, in the red area here, person.
Hello. My name is Javier Sagredo. I work at the Regional Bureau of Latin America and the Caribbean of the UN Development Program. The importance of the, of the evaluation, as Ambassador Carrera was talking about, and the interest of looking at the effectiveness of drug control policies, that is what is being behind our contribution to the UNGAS process. Our document is already on our webpage, and it's in the UNGAS also webpage. And we have, we have looked at all the impacts that drug control policies have had on human development results in the world, and we have looked at what impact it had in poverty and sustainable livelihoods, on public health, on the formal economy, on governance, conflict and the rule of law, on human rights, what implications it had for gender issues, on the environment, and also indigenous peoples and religious practices. And of course, this revision, and it's always, it depends from which point you see it, from the point of view of human development, the balance is, it's really negative for human development. And we have actually put together this paper to make a reflection, to help make a reflection on what those negative impacts have been. In this document, we also generate the initial elements of a proposal. First of all, a revision of these negative impacts and to start discussions on how to generate development more complex, context-adapted, sensitive policy responses in order to protect human rights, in order to reinforce governance, in order to build resilience, generate social and economic inclusion and sustainable development pathways. Within this effort, one of the first proposals we are putting on the table is the revision of the metrics to evaluate drug control policies and the need for new metrics to be able to eliminate perverse incentives for not moving and not changing policies in these issues. On the element regarding this review of drug policies and the whole discussion on UNGAS and the conventions and what we find as a scenario of non-existing consensus, we'd like to remind that this is the year where there's going to be a wonderful worldwide consensus on our development agenda. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the international community to review not only approaches on this policy, but in all policies regarding how those policies affect the capacity of member states, of communities, of populations to actually get closer to those SDGs. And they need to frame these drug policies and other public policies within the post-2015 agenda, which is global, is for the north and is for the south, is complex, is context-specific, and is affirmative for the development. So it's not a negative, it's not a negative agenda. I would add only a little point on the increase of coherence within the UN system, other than the participation and formal participation on the task force. What I think the UN needs to generate real incentives for UN agencies to work together, and maybe one of the proposals could be the generation of, and we have previous experiences in multi-partner trust funds, like the SDG Fund, which obliges for every project presented to that fund to be backed and in strong coordination between different UN agencies. I think it's, it could be an element that can push for a better coherence and development of specific programs within the field that actually make all the agencies to participate and at the same time bring together all the reference ministries and sectors to the picture of specific and context solutions. At the end, what we're saying in this document is that the drug policy cannot continue to be a factor hampering national aspirations to advance in the, in the post-2015 agenda and damaging human development. And on the contrary, it should generate affirmative processes for advancing on development objectives. I will leave it there.
Thank you for a very important perspective from UNDP. We don't have too much time, so I'd like to encourage people to try to frame their comments in terms of a question, please. Yes, sir.
I'm Karen Calvert from the Harry Guggenheim Foundation. One old habit in drug conversations that we haven't managed to break through with this panel is talking about drugs, as if drugs were not a number of different substances causing a number of different problems in a number of different local areas. Those of you who have mentioned anything specific talked about cannabis, which is probably the easy case. I would submit that purchase and reactions to heroin, to medicines that are obtained illegally, to any other sorts of drugs that are causing problems in the world, whether they're criminal ones or health problems, as well as in specific cases. The problem of heroin is not the same in a village in rural India as it is in New York City among the affluent college-going population, but it's still the problem of that one drug. So I'd like to hear whether the UN is going to be able to have a sufficiently complicated discussion about drugs without lumping it all in one basket.
We've got a lot of people wanting to ask questions. We've got a lot on the table, and we'll take one more question, then we'll come back to the panel, and we should have time for one more round at least. Yes, please, right here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Yvonne Dorte Peña from the UN Secretariat. I understand the outcome document to be adopted will be the result of an intergovernmental negotiation process. Now, that is correct. It seems that there are three variables on, like, that might pose a challenge to that, to actually be adopted. Time, I think we're less than a year to go for this to be the case. Second is the shared complexity of what is going to be negotiated. And three, the, I would say, the wide-range participation that is expected from civil society. Is there a realistic expectation that an outcome document that would meet your requirements, particularly of Mexico, Colombia, Guatemala, and the countries that want a new approach, be adopted? Is it realistic that that outcome document would actually come to fruition at the end of this UNGAS? Just an analysis of the political background will be interesting. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So we've got a lot on the table. We're going to cut at least one more round of questions, but I'd like to come back to the panel. If we could, panel members, try to restrict yourselves to just a couple minutes in response, and you'll have one more time before we wrap up for sure. Senator, the floor is yours.
The timeframe is indeed short, and we've been, like-minded countries have been using the opportunity to try and find a common ground, a common strategy for approaching the UNGAS. In terms of the outcomes, an outcome document, I think that if we can achieve perhaps not a specific reform proposal or attempting to do anything of that nature in a short time, but at least embrace the idea of having the kind of review that was adopted but at least embrace the idea of having the kind of review that was adopted previously, but perhaps broad in terms of the participatory elements in it, then we would have achieved something significant. I would defer to my colleagues to hear, you know, in terms of what they think the prospects are for anything, any other concrete outcomes. Yeah, what do you think?
Thank you very much. I will just focus on two issues. One is your question over there, that I am very sympathetic with your intervention. One of the major issues that we need to address is the different impacts of different types of substances, and how we are going to deal with them. One of the problems of the international agreement today is that they put everything within a basket, as you describe it, and that is a major problem. You say cannabis is an easy case. Well, that is not an agreement internationally. People believe that cannabis and heroin are the same, you know? And they have completely different impact on human health and also the question of dependence on the substance. So anyway, I just want to say to you that I think that is one of the issues we need to address effectively. How we are going to address different types of substances and different types of scenarios? In the debate about prohibition versus liberalization, I always try to find myself within something in the middle that is called regulation. Regulation is allowing certain things to happen and others do not happen, you know? So a certain level of prohibition and a certain level of freedom at the same time. And regulation is important because certain extremes we cannot accept. Let us put it this way, alcohol, okay? We accept the selling of alcohol, but we have put restrictions on that, you know? We cannot sell for human consumption alcohol that is above a certain level of percentage of alcohol within the substance. We cannot put any places, licenses to sell alcohol. Same with tobacco, we have restrictions. So it's not about prohibition versus liberalization, it's about something in between, which is called regulation. And we need to address each substance in its own matter, in its own impact, and that is a discussion we have had so far. Second element is regarding the politics of this issue, because whenever we address a public policy, we need to understand that public policies exist in a political environment, okay? And there are two dimensions of the political environment here that are critical. One is the political economy of the process, and there's the geopolitical dimension of it, okay? The political economy is about the fact that once you create a certain public policy, there's going to be groups of interest, the benefits from the application of that public policy, okay? And that exists today. So there are groups of interest that are going to force not to move beyond where we have, where we are today, not because they are opposing a certain approach to another approach, that is intellectual debate, it's about interest. How much money you make out of a certain approach, or you don't make that money out of a different approach. When I say we need to move resources from a certain level of repression into prevention, there are people who are not going to get contracts because of that, you know? So they're going to be fighting for, within their own countries and governments, to keep those contracts. And that happens in the US, happens in Guatemala, it happens in Colombia, it happens everywhere, you know? So that is the political economy. The political economy always puts constraints to changes. The other thing is geopolitics, and there's a certain dimension of geopolitical problems that we need to address. For example, the fact that in certain regions, in certain processes, we have started to see more connection between drug trafficking and organized crime, money laundering, and terrorist organizations, you know? And that is not a simple issue. We cannot address that issue just by saying prevention, prevention, you know? We need to address that issue as a specific matter. So there are certain levels of the geopolitics that also need to be addressed. And last point of geopolitics, sometimes we would like to be in a free world where we all are sovereign to take decisions, not in drug policy. And I have been there, when Guatemala said for the first time, President Otto Perez in 2012, I need to review some vision of drug policy. We have the visit of the Secretary of State, the Secretary of Homeland Security, and the Vice President of the United States in three months, okay? So yes, geopolitics and our freedom, we don't have sovereign decisions there. And we, you know, need to address the issue as it is. It's realism what we need anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Yeah, let me take a couple of points. In the first place, I fully support the remarks that came from UNDP's side about also the need to develop new indicators and evaluate the set of metrics to evaluate the impact of drug policies, and indeed to also find a link with the process that is going on for the Sustainable Development Goals. On the issue of drugs and more distinction between different substances, I fully agree that that is one of the key things. Yeah, exactly like you said, we should stop talking about the drugs problem. There are completely different types of markets going on. There are also different types of users. There are non-problematic users of some substances, there are, yeah, a part of the users that develop more problematic patterns. All those distinctions have to be made, and to start with indeed by making more distinction between the different types of drugs. In terms of cannabis, I think we can be quite clear about that what we are seeing happening now in Uruguay and in the US states is the beginning of cannabis moving out of the UN drug control system. If next, at the end of next year, there will be like five or six states more here in the US taking that same route, including California. If California does it, I'm pretty convinced that Mexico will do the same. And then the systemic breach with the treaties is becoming so profound that it is, yeah, impossible to sustain that tension within the system. There are very, and that is part of the inconsistencies that I refer to in the treaty system, that there are, and that complicates the issue, the different approaches, how the different treaties treat the different schedules that are attached to each of them. And just to give one example, the 61 Convention does include the coca leaf in the same schedule as cocaine, and it's under exactly the same control system, while the 71 Treaty now does include cannabinoid, cannabinoid, sorry, but not the COT plant that contains the alkaloids. Similarly, the ephedrine is controlled, but not ephedra, the plant. So if, or that logic is not consistent throughout the system. And well, some final remarks about the outcome document and the expectations at that level. That process is now fully, has fully started. Now, there is a September deadline for inputs in Vienna. There will be an intercession on the 24th of September to have a first draft of the outcome document already on the table, and then in December, there will be a whole day devoted to the political negotiations on the draft. I think an important decision that has already been taken is to have, and it was quoted by Simone, to have a concise, action-oriented type of document. And the reason for that decision is in part because the last statement, the joint ministerial statement of last year, took, that was such an incredibly painful process to negotiate. It took like seven months, and it ended in, yeah, a typical UN, but also quite, compared to the time invested in it, a relatively, now very unsuccessful ending, I would say. So, and many country delegates fully agreed with that, and they want at least to prevent that something similar, a similar painful process has to be done now. So it will be more short, more concise, more action-oriented, and drafts are now being made, and countries and regions are asked to provide inputs. There is an issue about civil society participation in it, because there has not been a formal request to get inputs from the task force, civil society task force, but I'm sure there will be mechanisms to at least express the opinions, and we will, of course, make sure that the opinions from civil society will be at least clearly on the table. Let's leave it there.
You know, any outcome document is a painful process in the United Nations. Labor and giving birth is something that hurts. And I don't think that's unique about whether it's going to be a long document or concise one. Sometimes it takes even more time and more pain when it's short and concise. So I'm not so sure that's the case, because there you have to have less leeway as to what kind of agreements you can broker. That may be a good or bad thing. As to reporting, really important point that you made. Yesterday, I mentioned, when I was talking about the death penalty and drugs and being part of the death penalty's application, only 54 of the member states reported. I had to rely on the UPR reviews to get more information. So if people would respond to the questionnaires on the World Drug Report and on all the other things that are out there that we're trying to, that's a responsibility of member states, first thing, but we need to do better in that. On prevention, one of the things that we need to do is involve users in putting together treatment programs. If we don't involve the users and just tell them what we think should be done, we're not going to be successful. We worked with 380 NGOs a year. Many of them have users involved, and former users involved, both users and former users. That is important. What are their needs? As to heroin versus marijuana, look, in 1997, when I was working for, as lawyer for High Times Magazine, we filed the first petition to reschedule marijuana from Schedule I back then, when I was a lawyer in that capacity. There was a lot of talk about marijuana versus heroin. You mentioned that the US is not in compliance with the conventions, but if you talk to the United States, they say there's flexibility in the conventions to allow them to tailor the response they have. So there is the issue of the letter of the conventions and the spirit of the conventions that some member states would say is not an inconsistency, but is the true intention of the conventions for the health and welfare of mankind. Just putting that out there to say that this is a position of many member states. And finally, heroin. One thing we didn't talk about today is the Security Council. It's not just the General Assembly and the ECOSOC that's looking at this issue. Since December 2009, when Burkina Faso brought the first PRST on the devastating impact that drugs are having over there, we haven't seen the Security Council say, oh, let's focus more on prevention only or rebalance. They're talking more about the need for also a security approach and law enforcement approach. So let's not suggest that that's not a reality as well. Finally, last thing. Javier, on development, your point is very well taken. I think that UN agencies working together well, you know, every time, I don't only appear in the third committee, I'm the jack-of-all-trades master of none of UNODC, so I'm in the fifth committee, and they ask me in the ACABQ in the fifth committee on every issue, be it on crime, be it on drugs or corruption, what are you doing with other UN agencies on this? So member states have a way to, through the governing bodies, be it the CCPCJ or the CND, to ask UN agencies in whatever their governing bodies are, how are they working better together with other UN agencies? That's a more efficient way. Forget about only productive, but it's also a more efficient thing to do, and they are asking that question. So will it be a transformative outcome document? Time will tell, but let's not only rely on the outcome document, and let's not only rely on the UNGAS, let's continue to work on this issue, separate and apart from the UNGAS, to make sure that those who are suffering most, those who are dying from drugs every day, those who are incarcerated for being users, have some kind of help in the system while we sit here comfortably in the UN and debate whether or not we should have a new treaty regime. Thank you.
Great, we're close to running out of time, but I do want to make sure to get a few more voices on the table from the audience before we have a final word. Yes, we had you here, yeah.
Hi there, James Reinal from Al Jazeera. Mr. Lupala, at the beginning of the session, you spoke about there being international momentum on all these big issues, the SDGs and climate change and so on, and I'm wondering whether or not the panelists think this is an area on which there is comparable international momentum. Although a lot of the panelists sort of advocate in favor of changes to the international treaty system, there are obviously a bunch of countries that aren't so liberal when it comes to drugs. You've got Russia and China, a lot of Asian countries where, you know, executions are common for drug sentences, and I'm just wondering if there's going to be any changes to the treaty structure. It's going to, through the UN system, it's going to take on board the views of liberal countries and illiberal countries, and thus presumably any document that comes out of this is going to be a UN fudge, it's essentially going to be meaningless. Am I right about that?
Hi, I'm Heather Haas. I'm chair of the New York NGO Committee, and as Simone mentioned, co-chair of the Civil Society Task Force. It's true, you're right, we have not had official requests to put input into the consultations going on now for the zero draft of the output document, but I do want to take an opportunity really quickly to say that there are a lot of opportunities to have NGO input into this process, one of which is a global survey that is posted on both the Vienna and New York NGO Committee websites. It's in 10 languages. It will provide direct input from civil society into the UNGAS process, so I encourage everybody to please fill it out. There are only 10 days left before the deadline for this. And also, we will be holding regional consultations over the summer and the fall to directly, you know, provide NGO input into the process. So I share your optimism. I think that there is, with conversations like this ongoing, that we have a very good chance of making this a successful UNGAS, but we need civil society input, so please contact the two committees to get in touch with that process. Thank you.
Thank you. One more question? No? Okay, so we'll come back to the panel for final response to those questions and any final words. We'll go in reverse order, so Simone, any final words?
No, I'll move on to the next. Thank you for inviting us.
Also, the question on the politics of Russia, China, Asia, and how the liberal versus illiberal inputs into the process is important. But any, no, it's okay, if you want to pass it on.
No, I'm, you know, go to Martin, sure.
Yeah, no, of course, there are deep divides in the international community about how to go forward, and yeah, part of the success, in a sense, of the UNGAS outcomes, I think, is also finding a way to recognize that there is a broken consensus and that there is a divergence of opinion rather than a growing consensus. And I do see that around the issues that have been mentioned now several times, around more humane approach towards drug users and proportionality of sentences, et cetera, that there is a growing momentum of more and more support for that direction of policy developments, and that in that sense, the, yeah, a country like Russia is becoming more and more isolated in their quite extreme position that they are taking at the moment. How to deal with those tensions in terms of, yeah, possible treaty reform? Now, I definitely think that politically, this is not the right moment to sort of call for a global conference of the parties and start negotiating a new treaty, because there are these fundamental divides, and that would be a nightmare political negotiation that you start. I do think that it is the right moment to start an honest debate about it, but then also looking at, yeah, possibilities to improve, yeah, also to reduce the legal tensions, yeah, by looking at other ways of accommodating the treaty Treaty reform is not only negotiating a new treaty, it can also be a group of countries that make certain agreements among themselves, interseal agreements, to modify certain parts of the treaty with effect only among themselves, or like Bolivia has done, to withdraw from the treaty and re-adhere with a new reservation to exclude themselves from certain obligations. So there are ways to address it in a more plural way and not find, at the moment, full consensus.
Ambassador.
Thanks for your question, because I think it's very relevant. It links to two things. One is sovereign decision around drug policy, which is a very important issue. I think it is important that each nation also has an understanding of how to apply international law in this regard, how to make it better. I made a presentation in 2013 about certain ideas in the UK, in London, certain ideas of how to approach differently drug policy in Guatemala. And one of the members of the audience came to me and said, he was a former head of the drug control body of the UK. He said to me, why you cannot implement that? And I said, because we don't have sovereign space to do that, okay? Simple as that. And if you go to the US, yes, they say to you that everything you're doing within the US territory is absolutely respectful of the conventions, as Simone just mentioned. If you say, can we do the same in Guatemala? No, you're not allowed, okay? Now, I want to be realist in this, because sometimes we have debates about, you know, ethereal questions. This is very practical questions. So the sovereign space is about, in my opinion, how regions treat this issue now. And I think there's a consensus in the Americas that is different from the one in Asia, and there's a growing consensus in Africa and Europe that is different from the one in Asia, to tell you the truth. And that is a major difference. That implies that the minimum floor that we want to accept as global policy has to be lowered, in my opinion, okay? Because we have differences on how to approach things. On the one hand, we have ideas about prevention and treating differently and also proportionality of penalties and stuff like that. On the other hand, you have death penalty and that's it, you know? I don't think we can reconcile things, you know? But the only way we can go without what I call also, that we shouldn't sacrifice a global control system just because we have differences of opinion.
Yes.
We have to find another floor, a different floor. What I agree fully with Simone and others who have said it before, is very important is that we do not break our capacity to deal with transnational crime, okay? That is a critical issue, because it deals with global security, you know? I don't think any responsible member state of the United Nations can move in a way that will break the global cooperation against transnational crime. So that is the minimum floor, in my opinion. But then moving up from there, you know, many different options, and we should be open to that. And the system should lower the floor in that regard, without breaking, as I'm saying, the international cooperation against transnational crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, you have the final word from the panel.
I would endorse what has been said on this issue. I agree with you that the polarization, which was evident in the high-level thematic debate, when you juxtapose the contributions in the afternoon from those in the morning.
Absolutely.
Means that the approach to the UNGAS cannot really be premised on trying to find consensus around specific reform measures or anything of that nature. But I think if states realize that the system is not regarded as working adequately by many states, even those who are more conservative in their approach and have their own reasons for that, in their own realities and the issues that they face, I think the idea of trying to find a way that would allow the system to continue to be embraced fully by the states that are already in it, and recognizing the need for some recalibration that would allow that to take place while not losing the most critical things, which I think are the system for fighting against transnational organized crime and all of the negative impacts that has on governance and states and development and so on. I think if that, if the need for that recalibration, so as to keep the system intact, can be appreciated by everyone, then there's an opportunity, I think, for an open and honest debate about a way forward. And I think that's what I hope UNGAS will provide, is some kind of avenue for moving forward. If it doesn't provide any avenue for moving forward, then I think it's going to be problematic for many of us.
Thank you. All that is left is to say thank you for all the participants, thank you for the panel for a very rich, detailed, informative discussion, and thank you all for coming.